Okay, it is a little bit after 6:30. I call our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions for this meeting? There are not. So the next is our select board minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Great. Any discussion, anything anyone notices? Hearing none, all those in favor, accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. And now we're on to pay orders.
Any additions?
No.
I'll make a motion for $29,774, 28.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Hey Sandy, I don't know if this has been a big question for Phil. Do they have a... They get gas in the, I believe, in the pickup at Cumbes? Do they have a...
At Tennybrook.
Oh, they get it at Tennybrook?
Yes.
Oh, okay, alright. I didn't say if they got it at Cumbes, I was wondering if they had a... Could I see them over there? I wonder if they had a gas guy through Cumberland's that'll save them 10 cents a gallon.
Yeah, they get it through.
Not to cheap, but I am cheap.
It's okay. Okay. Frugal.
Hmm?
Frugal.
Yeah.
So all those in favor of approving the pay orders?
Aye.
We should be hearing that.
Okay. Okay, why don't I go down to honorable mentions? Tom Ford for expecting town hall after the exterior paint and carpeting project. Ken Welch for addressing a minor issue following annual fire alarm inspection at town hall. The road crew for repairing and painting a donated bench to be located at Stone Meadow. And Justin Jankis for assisting with the municipal website and the computer technical issues. Do we have any public comments this evening? No, no public comments? Okay.
See if he's on the way. I can look there when he discovers.
Okay. So let's go ahead down to our... Let's see how far ahead we are.
Shannon's planning on being here for the grant for Elton Lee.
Do the dog bite thing because Joe's here. Could do the dog bite because our animal control officer's here.
Okay. Okay, so let's go over the dog bite incident. We have an enclosed report from the animal control officer. It happened on August 11th. We have the health officers' report and a copy of the animal regulation ordinance. Would you like to speak too?
I think I had to talk with me my computer died.
Oh, no.
Basically, I just spoke with all parties concerned on the dog bite. It was 6:20 in the morning. The homeowner, as she does every day, usually leashes her dogs from the house 30 feet away using her outside pen. This particular day, she thought nobody was going to be around that early in the morning. She let the dogs out, was almost in a pen, and a driver came by, surprised the dog. It was a one-off, never happened before, but it did bite this individual. Two puncture wounds, oh, four puncture wounds, I'm sorry. But she was there when the second's got the dog. I talked to him and he really had no empathy to the dog. She actually invited him back a day and a half later to meet the trainers with the dog. He actually played with the dogs, met them. It was just a freak incident in everyone's opinion. But she was very contrite with me, careful all the time. Never happen again. And she, of course, introduced me to her trainer a couple days later as well. And she's adding about her leashes from now on, in and out of the house. Basically, I'm convinced it's a one-off thing. It was nothing that's going to happen again, but I'll leave in your notes for that.
Okay. So with that in mind, how would we like to proceed?
As long as it's on record going forward, I think, you know. Just put it on record, put it in the official, you know. Record, and it will be in a minute, so anything happens again, then we'll...
Okay.
I agree, yes.
Do we need a motion on this, or can we go by consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. So does everybody, is everyone good with that? Okay, yeah?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, don't see...
Did you want to speak under public comments?
I'm not sure what I came in on.
What are you here for? Are you here for a public comment, or...
I'm here to hopefully hear some discussion about the boy with the dump.
Gotcha, so we will talk about that, but that's going to be later in the meeting.
Later in the meeting?
Yes, yeah.
The rest of the stuff will be real interesting between now and then.
Always. Always. Okay. Okay. So we've done the dog bite. Should we look at the transfer station fee?
Yes.
What happened to Grant?
Shannon's supposed to be here.
Yeah, she's going to be here for that, so we're really early.
Okay.
Yeah, Shannon comes right before her time.
Speaking of that, we're 23 minutes early, so... We'll go on to, we're just going to move ahead with a few things. Bill's coming any minute, and then we'll give Shannon some time to get here, and then we can get back to that. So let's talk about the transfer station fee. Art Neimeth has submitted the enclosed draft. Fees have not increased since March 1st, 2021. So what would we like to do?
Who's like thought was put into this?
Yes, and now it looks like it's on items that are dropped off, not on the punch cards.
Right.
You know, miscellaneous items and... So what do we all think?
Let me just get... Well, between two and five...
It's been three years since we've increased rates.
Must be that the two punches, four punches is working.
Yes.
They didn't want to change that.
Well, that was, I think, the reason.
I was going to say that was changed not too long ago, wasn't it?
That must have been in 2021.
No, it was changed since then.
Oh, since then, okay.
I believe, maybe not.
Yeah. I thought it was pretty recent, the punch cards.
I think it was last year, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
They increased to the number...
When did you change the punch card rate?
Yeah, it was last year.
Last year.
It was last year, okay. But this is on other items.
Yeah, like you said, just drop something, bring it in, drop off.
This is stuff that goes in the south end.
Yep.
Yeah, some of it.
Demolition debris.
Some of it's like the refrigerator, air conditioners, those get set aside. Those cost us $10 each or something in the free on-rem room, so...
And then if you look at like oversized tires and...
Right. Those we have to take up to the Rutland, and we truck those up when we pay them.
Right. So this will cover that cost. Will this need a motion?
You could do it if...
Can we do it by consensus? We can do this by consensus. We can do this by consensus, so... Is everyone good with these? Any comments on them? No?
No.
Without objection, it's so ruled.
Okay, so it is so ruled.
Yeah.
Okay. Now I see that Shannon is here. Is anyone else going to be here with you?
I don't know, I haven't confirmed that anybody's coming.
Okay. We are early. We could take you. Do you want to wait a few minutes? We're 20 minutes early. What do you think?
I mean, I guess we can talk now, wait if somebody has something to add, maybe we can come back to it. But if it's much simpler.
We could do something else on our agenda. Why don't we do...
Is anybody else with the committee?
Well, we got the 5K race and a charity, you know.
Yeah, so why don't we do the 5K race?
So that's...
So we're going to do the 5K race right now. We approved this in March of 2023. The school provided a certificate of insurance. We did not have waivers signed.
We did not last year.
And because with the Southern Vermont League...
Pretty much covered.
Yes, it's covered through them, so at... No one signs waivers on any of these meets that are held in different locations. Okay?
So I do know that they're going to be like there like a couple days before to just go through, do some cleanup of, you know, making sure there's no loose anything, you know, sticks or anything across the trails. The coach did do a walk-through yesterday
Oh, good.
to make sure there's nothing too mu... You know, everything seems to be...
And then the team will know in advance that week before, and there'll be...
Yeah.
Practices at the...
Yes, yeah, so there will be some practices there, at least one, and...
Right.
But our team only consists of...
Four.
Four. So it's not like when our team is there practicing, it takes over. So just want to make sure that's clear. It's a lot different than when the whole meet's going on.
Right.
We have two middle schoolers.
Right, so we have six.
Two varsity boys.
Two varsity boys, two varsity girls.
Three girls.
Three varsity girls, if they all participate.
Yeah.
There'll be more there when the whole meet is going on, the whole, obviously, the other schools will be there.
But the Mill River team might consist of seven.
Yeah. If they all go to that practice.
Yes.
And then they'll be setting up that morning, probably around 7:00, to start putting the cones. And I did talk to David.
Great.
There was discussion about, is it okay to put just spray paint on the rec lawn? And that seemed to be not an issue because it'll just get mowed over.
Okay.
So unless anybody has, knows of any other reason besides that, it'll just be cones and some sticks. Like last time. Just as long as the, everybody is aware that that'll be going on.
Right, and that's on September 21st?
Yes.
So is the board amendable to having this race again? Okay. Right?
Okay.
It was a great event last year, looking forward to it this year?
I think there was, what, four, five schools that came?
Yes.
Last year?
And they really enjoyed it.
And I know Sweet Birch was very busy afterwards.
Yes.
So...
Yes, and now the market will be...
Yes, that's what I was just, yeah.
They must go run the loop a few times to get 5K in there.
Yes. They go through the rec lawn, the varsity goes through the rec lawn once, and they go up. I get the trail names confused, so it's the...
The rim trail.
More inner trim trail, up in front of the lake.
Yeah.
And then down the outer section, then they come back, and they go around the basketball court. The tennis court, through the rec field again, to the finish.
Ah. Good.
Oh, yeah, so they go back up, so it's two on the trails.
Is it, is two on the trails?
The middle school just does it all at once.
Right.
So there's three start times.
Varsity does it twice.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so there's middle schoolers go, then girls varsity, and then boys varsity.
Great. Okay, um, let's see where we're at. We're five minutes closer. We can go on to do the Casella trash compactor agreement.
Right.
I presume the rates went up, Sandy?
Yeah, and they're in your mail, fees and all yard.
It's to be 90, 90 bucks a pole.
Okay.
In 1988.
It's 2:01 in the hall. It's 2:01 now. It used to be 152. Disposal is 140, as opposed to 104. The rental is the same.
Okay. So this is a five-year agreement instead of a 10-year?
Yes.
Okay. And the CPI adjustment is a little different as well. It's using the garbage and trash index. And this index tracks more closely than an all-item CPI index. Is this consensus or motion? A motion, so we'll need a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion when you sign the agreement with Casellas.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Do you have a second, we're good.
A third, I'll third.
Okay, so anyone need to look over the agreement anymore? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So maybe we'll listen to Eric because he doesn't... No, maybe he's not showing up. He was supposed to, but I can't get all of them, so maybe something's not...
Okay, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Ah, roadside mowing, where are we at?
Oh, we...
We're not on East Street, so...
Well, on West Hill, on Fort.
Okay.
And it was brought up last week, and I called Phil, and his tractor is waiting for a part.
Okay.
And I asked him about the excavator and using that thing. That won't work for mowing. That would just wrap right around in there, you know. So we're stuck.
We're stuck.
It's not the first time.
Okay.
Yeah, but it will, will be done
Okay.
before the snow flies.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was the first part.
Okay, second part.
Second part, when I was here for budgeting last year, we have that $3,000 set aside for tree cutting on East Street that the town couldn't get with their mulcher. And I'm assuming it's still, the funds are still sitting there because the trees are...
Right.
So, well, I didn't know where we were with that.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know about this. Nobody told the tree warden.
Oh, wow, there's some overhanging trees that were too big for the mulcher to get.
Okay, whereabouts?
Oh, you can kind of pick them out all the way down through.
Okay.
So, you know, they're kind of overhanging in most of our...
There's a roller trip on West Hill Road, too. It's just going right over.
Right, a lot of these are, I understand, the power lines in the way from a lot, for a lot of them. So it's going to take...
Better get a professional.
Whatever it is, right, a professional, yeah. Yeah, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the tree warden can take care of that.
Well, your problem is, you ain't going to get a professional for three grand to take off too many trees.
Oh, oh, yes you are.
Does it...
I cut the whole town down for three.
Yeah, but around the power lines?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
54 years experience.
Okay.
I don't even have to look at them. Never, never saw one I couldn't do. So you're lucky. You don't have to have the expensive professionals.
The offer is still there. They can dump alongside my gravel pit, and...
Yes.
Honestly, when the tree shear was in full use for the four hours before it broke, that did a really good job, and they just pushed them off the side of that old gravel pit.
What did, what did a good job?
Phil had a tree shear lost on his...
Oh, yeah.
And it worked pretty good until it didn't.
Yes.
So...
Went the way of the tractor, went the way of the mower, waiting for a part.
There you go, waiting for a part, a couple of years. There you go, so...
No, ah...
But...
I'll ride by there and I'll see if I can talk to you about specific things you're worried about. But Steve probably knows too, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, stuff that's either hitting top of my wagons or the town trucks, so, yeah.
Without objection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we are.
That was it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. And so now, about nine minutes early, you think we can get started and...
Yeah, I don't know, so two of the members are Carol and Justin. The other two are Ralph and Denise, so I don't know if they're coming or not.
Okay. If you'd like to get started, I think, if anyone is going to show, we won't be done before we hit the actual time, so...
That works for me.
Okay.
All right, so I wanted to come and give you an update on the grants that we are looking to apply for this fall for Elton Lee, the first of which is the erosion mitigation implementation project. And that grant is due September 23rd. I sent Sandy a draft of the grant application. You've seen the design, which hasn't changed. So I've done all the permitting review and, you know, checked on the budget to make sure it's still accurate, given it's been a little while.
Yeah.
I was concerned about that. So I think, you know, I think it's in good shape, so I'm just here to receive feedback and see if you, you know, authorize us to send in the application on the 23rd. And then there's another grant that we were hoping to apply for, for the building, and I was hoping to update you on that as well.
Okay, so why don't we talk about the erosion areas first? Oh, here's the matter.
Phil, did you talk to Eric?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I'll hide it in the corner.
So should we... So Shannon, do you want us to, shall we continue with this? Yeah, so let's do this. So any questions on the erosion grant? So we're good, okay, can we do this by consensus?
Yes. And just to summarize, because I know like Rob wasn't around for this when it was done, but like basically, the plan is for the north end of the beach that's like eroding, to build basically like a rock retaining wall and build that up and plant it with like native vegetation, and putting a fish and pier, and basically like make it more easily maintained so it won't erode into the lake, and then create two like rain gardens uphill from that to capture the water from the building and the runoff.
So are we good with signing off on this grant?
I'm, yep.
And I am too, so, okay, great, thank you.
The other grant we're still working on, Ralph has done an amazing job of like designing the building layout, and we've been talking about different options for trying to, you know, have better bathroom access, have better flow for staff, have better visibility for staff, storage for boats, like all the things that have been issues. One thing we're running into is that based on the design that Ralph, the conceptual design that Ralph came up with, we were hoping to get some contractors into the building to get some estimates this fall so that we could put in a reasonable number to the grant, but we haven't been able to get any contractors to return our phone calls. So that's a bit of a challenge. So what Ralph suggested was just putting in like a flat number per square foot for renovations, and then working with whatever we can get. So he suggested 50, $50 a square foot.
Okay.
So, I don't know, we'll come back and talk to you about that maybe in October before the grant is due, but we're still working on that.
Okay.
It's not too bad, don't do a callback.
What?
It's not too bad, don't do a callback.
I know, well, I think everyone's just super busy and...
Oh, yeah.
The nice thing is that that grant, like, we would have two seasons to get the work done. So hopefully, if we started like as soon as we knew we got it, we could line somebody up. But, you know, Ralph was telling me it takes a lot of time for somebody to come up with a good estimate, and they're not going to spend like four hours when they're swamped trying to close out projects for the season, so, you know. But how do you, you know, how do you know what you need for a grant without getting an estimate?
Right.
It's like this catch 22.
Yeah.
So I thought that was a reasonable suggestion.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable.
You may not be able to get any.
Right.
Right.
So maybe $50 square foot is the best we're going to get, and we just prioritize. Like, you know, number one is like, whatever, whatever we come up with. The only other thing I wanted to ask was about the material for the, for the south baseball field that we're waiting on the road crew to deliver.
I didn't know they were going to deliver anymore. I don't know why it happened.
Yeah, I left messages for multiple times.
So the only, I mean, there's no, not a huge rush on that, we just wanted to get it done before the winter.
I will let them know.
I think they were just going to wait for a rainy day to like truck the slate, and that's, you know, part of the FEMA grants.
Gotcha.
And you want to do it at the same location that they did last time?
No, we wanted them to back right onto the field and dump it right on top of the field. Mark had borrowed a machine from somebody and moved the rocks out of the way so that a truck should be able to back. It would just save us a ton of time of like going back and forth with a bucket if they can just dump the, I think it was two or three loads, like right on the field, and then we just have to spread it. That would be great.
Okay, that's all for me.
The septic is fixed, right?
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah.
That was great news. There's nothing like disastrous.
No.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Cleaned out the main drain, I guess, was full of unmentionable stuff that shouldn't be mentionable.
Right, well, I was wondering too if they're putting like washcloths down there. I wonder if we can get one of those hand dryers.
Well, that's the same, and I would talk, because there's paper towels and...
Towels.
Get rid of the paper towels.
You could just do hand sanitizer or something.
Yeah.
Or a portable or something.
And if we put a sign in there saying nothing can go down the...
We do put signs in there.
Yeah.
Everyone likes making bigger signs.
But is there a trash can in there for people to like throw things that shouldn't be thrown? There is, okay. I really need that much attention.
Yeah.
A cover, we might need to get a cover.
Something, yeah.
Right.
But I think it's probably, it seems like it's a common issue that places deal with all the time, and people are just throwing everything they have.
But yeah, something to look at when you're doing your renovations, if you do a blower instead of...
If there's like a simple fix to like put in a blower.
A blower instead of paper towels.
Instead of paper towels, yeah.
A blower instead of paper towels.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that was one.
But I was just glad to hear it doesn't need to be completely reinforced because that would have been, like, a...
Yes, and at least we don't have to worry about that.
Yes, okay.
Well, I'll leave you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our road commissioner.
I'm here.
Do you have a report for us today?
Well, there's not a whole lot to report. They've been grading, doing some brush mowing, did a bunch of work on...
Oh, you have been mowing?
Yeah, he's been... He's, no, I have not been mowing with a site with a grass mower yet. That's going to start next week. I'm still waiting for my tractor to be fixed. If it doesn't get fixed, I'm going to have to do something with another tractor.
Yeah.
Starting next week, have not moved. But Steve has been mowing with the weed whacker, the big weed whacker. He did a bunch of work on Parker Road that washed.
He's a big one, he's not? A big weed whacker goes on a truck?
No, no, he's got one on the excavator.
The brush, the check out.
Brush out.
Yeah.
He's been doing some with that.
Oh.
And stuff, I've been moving them around, and they've been different places.
And he's been on Parker Road?
Yes, he did a whole bunch on, they did, the hill from Todd Parker's down through and up over the other side, they did all that, all washed in and stuff.
Thought we were getting hitch on a truck, so you didn't have to do that.
It is a hitch, there is one, they've got it now.
Okay.
So, but we need to register the trailer. Small details, I know.
Only if you get stopped.
That's right. Minor, minor, okay, that's what I said. Anyways, no, that's, as far as I know, that's ready to go. That ended with the work they did, and everything's ready to go. So...
Because it should be nothing registered trailer, we got a bill of sale.
Hey.
Did they found it? I'll go look it up.
Is that the problem, can't find a bill of sale?
I don't know, I'm sure I gave one to her when I sold it. I don't know why the town would have paid me if I didn't. What about the bills sales? We can make another one up.
I've got...
It's very easy to do.
Okay.
The numbers are stamped in the frame. I've also got them in my book at home.
Because that should be an easy fix.
Yeah.
So...
What about the trees on East Street? Did you talk to Eric?
I talked to Eric, I'm going to talk, I guess.
I'm going to go look and see. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go look and see what trees they.
Why, there's, it's just a whole, it's a row.
Row.
They're all draping. They're all growing over there. Yeah.
Down by.
Well, everywhere's.
That, that way. Everywhere's.
They're everywhere's. I mean, the trees are growing in everywhere's. You know, it's just a matter of what you wanna cut, you know, it's.
Oh, God, I love that.
Well, yeah, how much money do they wanna spend?
Oh, they don't have much.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. It's, you know, there's, I've, I've been working out.
I don't have much money.
Yeah. I've been working out there and it's, it's tight, but it's not anywhere as near as bad as some of the roads.
Yeah, so it's just encroaching on the.
Yeah, the trees are growing in, they can't be in.
They're growing trees and they're hitting the, hitting the barriers.
Well, no, he's weed whacked most of that. This is bigger stuff that's coming over.
Bigger stuff.
Yeah, you can log these trees and, you know, we can cut down everywhere's. I mean, every single road has.
Eric said it was getting the top of his wagons.
Yep.
And in the truck, in the dump trucks.
It's my log truck. It's a dump truck.
Used to put them in the bucket as a loader.
Yeah. That doesn't work anymore.
No.
No. No. Um, it's, yeah, it's just that we can look at them, see what you wanna do about it. You know, is, some of it.
Are they big?
Nah, not real big, but some of it's power line issues.
Right under the pump and the, and the windmill and the.
Yeah, but then you can tip them over and leave them in the side of the right of way, but we gotta clean them up.
Why?
Gotta plow.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the thing, they all, if they get cut, they gotta get plowed, cleaned up.
Yeah, we don't want them in the ditch, but you know, if you put it back there by the stone wall, fifty feet.
You know, you're not gonna be, you've only got ten, roughly ten feet off the face of, shoulder of the road.
Yeah. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's something you need to look at, figure out, and then go around the rest of the roads, there's some big overhanging dead trees.
There's that mullet tree up on West Hill.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know what made things grow so this year, I guess. What, it grew, everything grew this year.
Yeah.
You, you never know, he went down through there and weed whacked all that with a brush head. There's spots, doesn't even look like it was touched. But it's, it's something that the town just have to make a decision what they wanna spend and how they wanna do it. You know, some of it can be cut by the people, by us, and some of it's not gonna get cut by us.
Well, okay, it depends on what you're talking about. I mean, it's just because the limit of going over the road, it's not blocking traffic, is it?
No.
No, you're not looking about that.
No, there's no blocking. I've been driving up and down that road for the last three weeks.
Whether it's just too, it's never really.
It just narrows up in spots.
Yeah, narrow.
And it's, you know, it's depending on what you wanna spend and what, how much you want, time you wanna take and do it.
Plenty in the budget. I haven't seen a job yet, but. I'll look and report.
Okay.
And is there anything else?
There's, I don't, other than.
roadside mowing?
The roadside mowing. That's all I'm gonna do, start Monday if I have to switch tractors, I guess. I'm hoping my big one is gonna be done. And then we'll get that going. I apologize for being so long.
Batteries for the signs Sandy had sent, asked them to, to get a bat, a battery like at.
For the flashing radar signs?
Interstate battery or something for the flashing signs. I don't know if that's something that they can do.
Oh, you, okay, I'm confused.
Yeah, so the state, V Trans wants, said we can't have it flashing now. So Mark said he would take care of it if the, we would get a couple of batteries so you can get in there and stop the flashing.
I gotta have a charged battery in order to, to fix them.
Oh, so you're talking the ones on.
The three of them.
They have three of them.
All three of them. They're set to flash over, over thirty miles an hour.
They don't want the number flashing?
They don't want the number flashing at all.
So it's just gonna come up a fixed number?
Yeah, yeah. My response was, well, you should know that they flash if you were doing the speed limit.
What's a?
They flash everywhere. I drove to and from Brandon today, on the way to Brandon. It flashes and it's colored lights and it has a message, north and south on seven in Brandon, so they're everywhere.
Now, ain't pay road.
Yes.
So it's still gonna step down in speed as you slow down?
Yeah, it'll change. It's just not.
So basically it's gonna look like it's flashing anyways, because it's stepping down in the speed down.
It's not as noticeable. It's defeating the focus.
What I'll do is I'll change them. I'll put it up to about sixty. So if you're doing sixty coming into town, it will flash.
Yeah, and the lights come on.
I thought that the other day, if you weren't speeding, you wouldn't notice.
If they can just pick batteries, he'll take care of it, so they don't have to take care of it.
Okay, so I don't, I'm not sure what they are, but I'm sure Steve does.
You see the one going to Woodstock? You see the one going to Woodstock?
It's an option, yeah.
I like that.
Mark, if you know what the batteries are, can you?
I have no idea. I'll have to pull a manual on it, see if it gives you the name of the battery.
That's what I know, it'll say.
Yeah, I mean, the only other option is to go up with like a generator and inverter or something and like a battery charger.
Yeah.
Or take them down.
No.
Exactly. Because I, I pulled up the site one, one of my shaws the other day in the parking lot. And I couldn't, I, I could see it, but I can't talk to it. Bluetooth, so they say the battery has to be eighty-five plus percent charged in order to talk to it.
Midday then, maybe.
Maybe.
I noticed the one on one forty west isn't working at all right now. Yeah.
Oh, that one's dead?
Mm-hmm.
Where's that one dead?
I went down, up and down a couple times today and it's not, not long. I don't know if it's not getting up some, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Yeah, I've, I've, down I've come through, it's.
It wasn't today.
So I can't see if it ever was working.
Not today.
You have to push up the speed.
Oh, okay.
Don't do the speed limit right now.
Maybe that's my problem. Okay.
Other than that, I think I'm all set.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, so thank you very much. Um, yeah, so let's look at this now. Let's see where I have that. Um, we are now going to discuss the proposal that we have from Bill Lawson on the heat pumps for town hall. So what, you, you just received, sort of place on file, because there's still some in. Because we're still waiting for the other bid, so we'll just place this on file. That's right.
What do the other ones do?
Your next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
This is exactly the same one he submitted, except he switched the wording to concrete pad, because you want a lump of concrete pad, so.
And the number's incorrect, so.
Well, it's to our people.
It's to our advantage, but Sandy may wanna check on that.
Yes, yeah, okay. Okay, the other item of business that we have.
Man in the boot.
Is the boy with the boot. As we know, between ten PM on August twenty-seventh and six AM on August twenty-eighth, of the boy in boots statute was damaged. Sandy has checked on the insurance. There will be a thousand dollar deductible. People have offered to either fundraise or to contribute towards the cost of the repair. We're looking into different avenues in order to repair the boy in the boot. Right now, it is an ongoing investigation and the Rutland County Sheriff's does not wanna comment at this time because it is an active investigation. They are being very thorough and very extensive in their investigation at this moment and we are hoping for a quick conclusion, that there will be results coming in on this soon. I have given an interview.
A court decision?
No. Conclusion. Conclusion to the investigation, hoping for a quick conclusion to the investigation. I gave an interview to WCAX last, was it last week? Yes, and that was on the air. Channel twenty-two has since reached out to me to speak to them. So I have a phone call into them and I will call them tomorrow to see when they would like to meet. And WCAX would like to interview me, me again for a follow-up. So we're getting Boy in the Boot on TV.
Yeah, good.
On what's going on.
Well, that's good. You'll be, you'll be great.
Joyce emailed me today and said that she had, that she's gone, won't be back until the tenth, I think she said. But she said that she emailed the person that fixed it the last time.
Oh, good.
Um, who was that person? Now I can't find it. But she emailed, she said she had emailed, oh, there it is. She emailed. Rob? Somebody?
No, she, she emailed me about looking at it. I went and looked.
Oh, okay, okay.
I went and looked.
Well, she just says Rob.
It was definitely knocked over. It didn't fall. It was forcibly.
Did you, did you repair, the way it sounded like you repaired it the last time or didn't?
No, we painted it once.
Oh, okay.
No, I didn't repair it, but they also, I was on the board when we lost the boot. Somebody took the boot.
Yeah.
And they found it in.
Stony Brook.
The stream that comes out of Chittingham Dam.
Stony Brook, Stony Brook.
Yeah, Tanny Brook, no?
Stony Brook, yeah.
Okay. But just by, because we put an article in the paper and, or press release.
Yeah.
Reward offered for finding, so that was helpful. Because people do read papers, you know, otherwise what's, what's that, I don't know, you know?
So, yeah, so at some point, we're either gonna have to repair it, look at getting it fixed or as I don't know, Sandy or somebody come up with the idea of fixing it and putting it upstairs and putting in a replica of it.
Yeah.
I like the one we got, you know, and it looks to me like it's fixable. I mean, you could not tell before this happened that it's ever been broken before.
Right.
You couldn't tell. And, and it's broken in a few places, but the inside of it has got height like that. I mean, it's sturdy.
Right.
So basically it's a structure with a kind of facade around it, this zinc, I think it is. And somebody knows how to work with it. And, and we need cameras. We need cameras somehow. I don't know how.
Right.
You know, put a, a trail cam in the tree, you know, but. That's, that's all private property there.
Yes.
And so we can't put our camera on their.
Exactly, right. Exactly.
So we're just gonna let the sheriffs do what they gotta do now.
Yes.
And try to find somebody to fix it.
Yes.
Incentive for somebody to do it or library or, you know.
Right.
The library certainly has its share of challenges and things.
Yeah.
So.
So do we wanna start looking for somebody to start getting ready to fix it?
We are.
We are.
We have, we've had somebody come by last week. They thought their company could help and it turns out they can't. But I've got a few others that I'm contacting.
Perfect.
Some locals, one not. Most companies in Massachusetts, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Where there's so many art and sculpting people around here that should be contacts if they can't do it themselves, hopefully. Even just like the Mint, I mean, she's very interested in, in doing what she can when she gets back in the town. So there's definitely avenues.
It's just not gonna be quick. It's just gonna, it's gonna be a process.
But he's gonna be, you know, he's not gonna be out till next May anyway, so we have time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have time to do it.
Everything is just to get an estimate, so we can get the insurance part of that going.
Exactly. Yep. Okay, so there's an update on the boy, yes.
I put something into the front porch forum to, because I've been concerned, I've gardened down at Wallingford House on Boy with the Boot and the impact, the emotional impact of this on the community is huge. And I've had women coming out of Wallingford House just in tears and feeling like something.
It's a violation.
It's a violation. Wallingford House has, by the way, offered to have a camera up on the side trained at the fountain, which might be a perfect location.
That's, that's really, that's, that's very generous of them. That's.
At any rate, at their behest, I put that thing in front porch forum and I think it can be therapeutic if people show up on Saturday morning at eleven to just say whatever they wanna say about what the boy meant to them and so forth. But if a member of the select board would be willing to come.
Is that Saturday at eleven?
That would be very helpful because there's just all these conflicting, it's almost like internet misinformation going on. Oh, it just fell over. No, two men with flashlights were seen all around. They were going to steal it and take it to a dealer in New York or New Hampshire, on and on.
So is this Saturday at eleven?
Saturday at eleven.
Right down by the fountain?
Yes, of course it's supposed to be pouring rain, so.
Oh, that's right. I'm not gonna be in town.
Will be on the Wallingford House porch. Most of the people involved are residents there. Although I've also met two women in tears at the post office, so it's, it's profound.
It is profound.
It's not just one, for this people who used to live here too.
Yes.
Both, both TV stations both let me know that they have received so much interest and input from people regarding the boy. This has gone far and wide, what's going on, which is why they wanna continue interviewing me on this, so.
UVM Extension Service travels this route regularly and they've contacted me about, you know, they always look for it as they pass through town.
Right.
So it's, it's beyond us.
Yes, yeah. Well, thank you for your information and input. It's very helpful and.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we got, I think we all received the photos from the signage at Stone Meadow above the Bee Hives.
Oh, yeah.
EMO looks like it has, the town has received payment on three of the projects from the July twenty-twenty-four flood. There is, and there is one project left?
Yeah, it's the biggest one.
Okay.
It's five roads.
So that one is five roads and that one is still waiting to be obligated.
The twenty-twenty-four flood or the twenty-twenty-three flood?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-three flood.
Fourteen months in.
I was gonna say, how did we get something from this July already?
No, that's just a typo. Thanks, Mary.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, we've talked about the septic tank and how that's not as bad as we thought it was gonna be. I don't know if there's really anything else. The VLCT fair will be in early October at the Killington Grand. And I think that might be all the news for this meeting. Correct? Yep, okay. I will entertain the motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned.